Okay, all right. Okay, I'm calling this public hearing to order. The Committee on Early Learning, Juvenile Justice, Public Education, and First-Generation Initiatives is now called to order. Today is Friday, December 18, 2015, and the time is 2:01 PM. And our agenda is Bill Number 219-33, COR, introduced by myself, Nerissa Lee Underwood, an act to amend Section 12, 116E of Chapter 12, titled "17 Guam Code Annotated Relative to Official Enrollment for Funding of Academy Charter Schools." Notices for the public hearing were disseminated via email to all centers and all main media broadcasting outlets on December 11, 2015, for the five-day notice, and on December 16, 2015, for the eight-hour notice. I would like to thank all of you for being here today. And let's then just begin by, let me just say a few comments about the intent of Bill 219-33, COR. This is to allow the schools to use the official student enrollment number for the purposes of developing their respective budgets for each fiscal year. Based on discussions that I have had with administrators of the charter schools, there are some changes that already would have to be need, that we would need to make with a bill, as they have requested. So what you are commenting to is a bill that clearly, based on your input and input provided to us, would need to be amended, based, you know, as other bills usually goes through amendments. But among those that, the items is that we needed to provide clarity in that the beginning of this, the application of that amendment would be for fiscal year 2017, not fiscal year 2016, '17, but it's for fiscal year 2017. So it would be for August, the preparation for the development of the budget that would be hopefully approved by August 30th, right? So the official enrollment that we would be looking at would be the one from the preceding year, which would have been September 30 of this year. I also would like to comment that, based on the information that I had gotten through discussions with ILEARN administrators, the concern that they had shared with me was that they have actually been approved to have an enrollment up to 450. And if we based their enrollment for budgetary purposes and their official enrollment this year, that would only be 380. To what point then, would they then be able to meet that 450 threshold that had been approved for them? So again, the language would have to be such that we don't compromise what had been approved for the charter schools, but of course, not to exceed that. Now, again, what I want to do is just to, to explain the intent of this amendment is primarily to provide budgetary management. You need to know what you are really working with, right, in preparation for your budget. And so, and we need to also know that, you know, when your enrollment goes up, then, you know, and you may need to come, that wouldn't happen, but that you would actually know what budget is going to be provided for you. So it's really for budgetary management purposes. I would like to thank Vice Speaker Cruz for joining me, and thank you, sir, for joining us. And so with that, we have Helen Ishihara. I should just go through this, right? Okay, let me see. Those who listed their name, we have Thichus Mandiola. Did you want to provide testimony, or you just, okay. Charlene Betlow, you're not providing testimony. Okay. Elway Hula, and you're also just in support, okay. Greg Lizama, okay. And, okay. Yulay, or, I can't read the handwriting, but it's from GACS.
Faye Valdez.
Okay, Faye Valdez. Okay, all right, Faye. And then we have Helen Ishihara. Okay, all right. Okay, well, begin with Faye?
Yes.
Okay. Good afternoon.
My name is Faye Valenzio Valdez, and I'm the Chairwoman of the Board of Trustees at the Guam Academy Charter School. I'm here to present a testimony on Bill 219-33 on behalf of the school. I want to introduce the members of the Board of Trustees. I have trustee Thichus Mandiola, our new trustees on board, and our Principal Mary Muffness, trustee Victor Perez, here at the legislature today. The bill 219 proposes an amendment to the current Charter School Act identifying September 30 of the new school year as the date to determine the official count of students' enrollment for purpose of funding, and you indicated that earlier. Thank you. We are grateful for Senator Underwood for your effort in initiating a luncheon meeting with the Council Chairwoman Rosa Paloma and the Principal of the two charter schools to advance discussion of her plan, of your plan to introduce this legislation. Guam Academy Charter School is in support of the proposed intent of this legislative amendment since it offers validation of an existing process which regulates student growth to the adoption of the charter-approved five-year student enrollment plan. A copy of GACS-approved student enrollment plan is attached also, Senator. You would like to take this opportunity to point out that every year when Guam Academy Charter School prepares its proposed budget for submission to the council, we are mindful to stay within the student enrollment count approved by the council. We are encouraged by this proposed legislation, but concerned that it may be a bit problematic and mindful that a cap on student enrollment exists in the budget law. Thank you for the invitation to participate in today's public hearing on your bill. We are here to engage in a collaborative endeavor to move forward the intent of this esteemed institution. We need to pass Guam's charter law, offering parents a choice in public education. We would like to move forward to accommodate parents who are knocking on our doors, wanting their children to be placed in waiting lists for the next school year. We will continue to empower our children to access learning options that work well with them and to attend to our crucial mission of early education, teaching our children to read. Before I close, I want to say I am blessed to associate myself with our charter school educational community. GACS' success is due to the following reasons. The unvailing staunch support of our parents and guardians satisfied with the overall progress of our children. The hard work and dedication of our administrators, the faculty, and the students. The willingness of our students to learn, grow, and achieve, and the commitment of teachers to provide instructional tools for the edification of their students. The academic growth of students indicative of improvement and progress. The attitudinal enrichment displayed by students because of positive outcomes. The increase in the waitlist of students who have registered, and the decrease of students withdrawing. Very positive for us, Senator. We recognize that the multitude of work ahead of us will be challenging, but the mission, the goals, and the objectives of Guam Academy School remain the impetus to weather the challenges as we look forward that school year, when we will honor and showcase our first grades. To accomplish the mission and goals of our charter school, our students, administrators, faculty, and staff rely on the support of you, you and your colleagues at the Guam Legislature. We thank you, and we wish you, and each and every one of you a blessed Christmas and a peaceful, safe, and prosperous new year. I am a little rattled here, facing everybody here at the legislature. And then I tell you, it is not, sitting at the helm of the first charter school in Guam is quite a challenge, Senator. And I've seen how it was from the beginning, the many challenges, the many improvements that we have made with the rest of my colleagues at the Board of Trustees, volunteering a lot of time away from the family. Our meetings, and I know your staff would probably validate that, goes all the way to 10, almost 11 o'clock in the evening. And this legislation that we have provided by you will hopefully clear all the air in really clarifying where are we really going at as far as the enrollment is concerned. The budget, I understand, is within what we make on our island, what is revenue being generated, and what's part of that. I always tell myself that, why do we have such a small budget? But be reassured, Senator, that we will be mindful and we will be vigilant in hopefully getting additional grants to be able to help the school survive. We know that with current financial situations of our island, we will be left. And thank you, and thanks, and I really thank probably the new focus on the every, the no child left behind law that is now being changed to a new law that will really give us, it's very inspiring to see that this new law that is being put together, the ESSA, will guarantee at least additional funding for our island and for our students. And that is, it's almost like if you are in a contained situation where you would like to grow, and there's just very little money, just even a household, you would like to grow, and there's only just very little money to work with. I mean, it really stifles everything that you have planned for the future. And this is the situation where the charter school, our charter school on island, both GACS and ILEARN, is on. So thank you again, Senator, for allowing us to speak before you today.
Vice Speaker, if you have any questions for her.
Currently, what grants do you, additional grants besides the amount coming from government in Guam, do you have?
We were able to participate in a few grants, like the Peace Grant, Senator, and the Tree Grant, where we were able to purchase some computers for our students.
But I'm talking about federal grants, like you're talking about this new law. Did you, did you get?
We haven't, we haven't. This is quite new. So we are, we have a whole list of what we can probably look into and pursue eventually. I don't think anybody have any yet.
No, but I mean, even its predecessor, had you applied for any of the grants prior to that? I mean, I know that charter schools have a whole list of grants, grant opportunities.
In the beginning, I think we were able to get our startup money, and that's all the money that I've seen on the books that are, that were given to GACS. No other grants, I think, were pursued by anybody in the past. So this is a new set of Board of Trustees that are really looking aggressively to help this school. And just hopefully, this, the new law, the new ESSA will give us more opportunities to pursue any.
I mean, besides the ESSA, just any other, there have been in many of the other, I didn't bring my iPad with me, but I know if I just Googled in charter school grant opportunities.
We did, I think we have a whole list. Yes, I think, I think I was right early, the only money that we were able to avail ourselves from the beginning was the startup money that was put together and was applied for by Donna Dwyggenstrow Nifty, and that was it. And there were no more additional federal monies that we were able to tap. As I said, this new set of Board of Trustees are really actively looking into new monies that will come our way, you know, hopefully for our charter school.
Are there any grant applications out for the upcoming school year that you guys have submitted that could assist?
Not right now, but I think the beginning of the year, I mean, as far as the ESSA money is concerned, Senator?
Well, not with just the ESSA. I, as I understand it, there are other places to be, for charter schools to be applying for grants.
Yes.
Have you guys, do you currently have any applications out already at foundations, at other places, at other, besides DOE, US DOE, or even at US DOE? Do you have any other grant applications out that would provide for any assistance?
Not that I know, during my term of office. I know that by beginning of January, there'll be a whole slew of different grants that we'll be looking into, i.e. the facilities grant, probably through, the many other grants that will allow us also to be able to get a permanent facility for our school. There are additional monies I know that the Grants and Development Office is looking into, but currently, there's no application pending or filed at this time.
How many people do you have in your grants and office?
Well, there's only a couple of people actually that looks into that. I chair the grants, the grants and the grants and development money, and, but there's not really, that we're not, that we're working on right now. We have, we have only one person in the grant right now who's just looking at all the possible grant that we might be able to apply this coming year. We would like to.
Can I implore that you get people on, I mean, it's easily Googled.
Yes, yes, yes.
The different kinds of grants besides ESSA that hasn't even been passed or signed by the president yet, that there are other grant opportunities.
Yes.
And to please apply for as many as possible.
We'll do that, Senator. We will do that, Mr. Speaker, because that's really the whole intent of the new set of Board of Trustees. As our budget becomes a little bit more critical in terms of the overall operation of the school, we really have to start seeking into additional money and fresh monies for us to be able to support the operation of the school. As I said, we already have, we're lining up already facilities grants. There are other, there are other grants that we have participated, but it's basically just to be able to get us into the, probably in the experience of being able to run a grant within the school. And hopefully by next year, the new year, we'll be able to seek other opportunities for our, for our school to get additional funding.
I note in the approved enrollment plan that you have, that in the upcoming school year, will we be going up to 890, is this a request?
It's a projection, I think, that we have submitted on, let me just look into my, okay. 740, correct? 740, not 8. Where did we get that number?
It's in your attachment.
It's 640 to 890, and I'm just, I'm just trying to figure out, can, can we see how we're doing first before we keep expanding and adding additional grades?
Yes. In terms of performance, yes.
My understanding is that, first of all, going back to the question about application that you, applications for grants, that you're actually going to receive training for how you can be included in the consolidated grant. So that's one thing. Then the other thing is that with this amendment, we're actually going to base it on the official enrollment as of September 30, but not to exceed the approved enrollment for the initial application that was turned in. You're also required to submit an evaluation of the program.
Yes.
Yeah, a program evaluation that is going to be conducted by a third party. So we are concerned about making sure that before we go to 800, that our program is actually working and that our students are actually benefiting from what, the hard work that all of you are putting into Guam Academy and also ILEARN. So we're just a little bit confused with this attachment because while we, the total here in the red is in your attachment, and it says approved in the three-year extension plan, for school year 15, 16, 640 was approved, and I believe, what is your actual enrollment right now?
Right now, you're down 600.
600?
600.
Okay. So although you were, although you were approved for 640, right, so you are within that 600, initially, when you first opened school, I think you had 630.
Yes.
Right, and then eventually, students, you know, withdraw, and some come in, and so on and so forth, because it's just the nature of school.
School's right.
So that's why we have said, let's pick your official enrollment as of September 30 as the working document, I mean, as a working student enrollment for budgetary purposes.
Yes, yes, that better, yes.
Okay. So the next column here, for 2016, '17, this is what alarm says, because it's 640 to 600, to 890 is the enrollment. So we just want to clarify that with this bill, we are actually going to base it on your official enrollment as of September 30, which was, I believe, 630, correct?
September 30, you're down to 614.
Okay, 614. So that is what you, yeah.
So that we can get it down there.
Yes.
We had, we had, when we opened up, we had about 630. But then, when we received the letter from your office, we stopped, we stopped enrolling kids, but we had lots in the waiting list. There were a lot of, we had a long waiting list, but we had to turn them away. And then students started leaving because they were, they were going to, they were leaving the island and for other reasons. And so when we reached 600 or below 600, we started calling the kids that were in the waiting list. Unfortunately, it was like in the middle of the year, and many, of course, many of the parents said, our kids already enrolled in the class, it would be, it wouldn't be wise to uproot them and then bring them over. But they said, but can you put us on the list for next school year?
Okay. So technically, with this amendment, your official enrollment would be 614 that you're going to be working with.
Yes.
Correct?
Yes.
Right? And we're okay with that?
614.
14, yes.
Still within the range.
Okay.
It's still within the range.
Yes.
It is still within the, that range.
All right.
Yeah.
Okay.
And within that range, how much do we budget for?
We're still at 5,500, Senator.
5,500.
No, I understand, but do I, do I budget 5,500 for 640, or do I budget 5,500 for 890?
I think, are we looking at a 2017 projection?
Yes, yes.
For this next, this next school year?
Yeah, for this next, based on the amendment that you're supporting.
Based on the amendment, my understanding, it would be, for the first two months, August and September, it would be 614, because that's what we had September 30. But on September 30 of 2017, whatever numbers we have, that will be what will be, we would be budgeted for, for that school year, 2017.
And so how do you?
That's my understanding.
And how do you all propose that I'm supposed to budget for this? The budget is discussed in June and July. We pass it by the end of August. If the 614 was for the next school year, I could understand. But you cannot, you cannot come to me in, no offense, dear, but in September 30 and said, that's the, that's the budget for this school year. If you, if it was for the next school year, I can understand, but not for this school, for this.
Yeah. Well, the thing, I think we, well, at least my understanding is, the 5,500 follows the students. So if we were to get that many students.
Because we're not on a voucher system.
Okay.
So I need to be able to budget, and I need to know what the number is going to be.
We are going to.
And I, I'm not sure about this legislation, no offense, because I need to know when I plan for it, is 640 going to be the number that I'm going to work for and budget for in the 2017 budget that I'm going to pass in August, or is it going to be 890?
We were, we were going to try it for 740.
And where does that number come from?
Yeah. We were going to increase the number of students at, in each grade level, except for high school, because we're already matched out with the high school students. And we are going to check, we had in the earlier charter, had proposed to have at least three preschool, two or three preschool classes. The preschool classes would have 20 students per class, so we could have 40 to 60 already from that, from that number, which would make that 660, which means we have 80 other, 80 more students to fill in the kinder through eighth grade.
So, okay.
But at the same time, we are, we are cognizant of where our facilities are, and so we're being careful, we're watching. We want to make sure, yes, we can get the students, but we want to make sure that we have the facilities to house them.
All right. So may I just clarify something?
Please.
Okay. Okay, so, okay, so everybody, let, let me just explain the amendment. The amendment will identify, will base your school enrollment on September 30, 2016. That's your official enrollment. That is the number that you will use to develop your budget for fiscal year 2017, which will support your school operations from October 1 to September 30, 2018.
18.
17, 2017, okay. Now, the addition of your, when you're talking about 740, if you have 740 students that come in by in by September 30 of 2016, that is the number that you will use for developing the budget for 2018, not for, because your budget would already be set by August, right? So this next school year, you will be developing a budget based on the 614, which is your official enrollment as of the prior year, this past September 30. So if you're going to increase your enrollment to 740, you have to know on September 30 or 700, you are going to have to live with the budget that you had submitted in August, which is for fiscal year 2017.
Okay.
Right? You're not, we're not going to change the budget on September 30. The budget has to be passed by August 30th. So whatever you turn in at that time, that would be the budget. Now, if you have the grants coming in that's going to supplement your operations and so on, and you can take your 614 students, that budget with 614 students and supplement that, and you can somehow manage to keep the school going and meet your mission for the 740 students, we don't have an issue with that. But for budgetary purposes, for the management of the budget, your official enrollment of September 30, 2015, this past year, is what will be used to then develop the budget for 2017. And then we keep going on from that point on. It would be your September 30. So...
So I understand what you mean.
Yes.
So we would have, since we have 614 September 30, that's how much the legislature will
That's how much we will be budgeting.
If we go up to 1,000, what, we would have to take care of it --
That's right.
The rest ourselves.
That would be, that's right.
And then the following year, you can ask for 1,000.
You can then ask for 1,000 the following year.
When you've proven the --
Promise?
Yes.
You can't even meet your 640.
Uh, sir, we, we were, we were getting there, we were getting there, but we were told to stop because we were capped at 600.
Yes, because that's the law.
And so we stopped, but we were getting there because I was challenged. He said, can you get 640? I said, watch me. And then they said, stop. So...
Yes. And there was, and you know, this is all, again, for budgetary management purposes, right?
Understood.
Okay, so do we have an understanding then of what the amendment speaks, talks about? Okay, you may not agree with it, but do we understand? Yes, okay. All right. And if we have someone in the audience who doesn't understand it, we'll have a conversation and you can come up and we can, but, okay, so, so...
We're okay.
We're good. Okay.
We just want, we just want to clarify, I think I yield to Mary on the performance evaluation of this call. Maybe she could clarify better as to where we are, as to where the charter school is as far as like the performance.
Uh, yes. We're straightening things out because when I came in, I came in the middle of the school year last year and they had an independent evaluator. Unfortunately, the prior administration was making the, was, was working with the independent evaluator herself. So the board did not know what was going on. And when I came in, our chair, we, they presented, she presented a report, which was not really a very good report. It was not, it was, it was just not right because she did this, they did the SAT 10 test and several other tests, but the report she gave was just maybe 10 pages of graphs, which was not good. Anyways, we, we have a new independent evaluator and we did the SAT 10 test correctly and we had it scored and we presented it to her and she's now working on writing a report. But she said from what she saw from the independent evaluator's graph, she saw that there was improvement, very much, a very large improvement in their, their reading, their reading scores because it was start with them not knowing how to read and of course them learning how to read better. So we are, we are thinking of doing the SAT 10 test again one more time because this last SAT 10 test, the past school years, is going to be our baseline. And then we would like to see the improvements. We expect improvements from there, along with the other, other tests that are, that are given to the different grade levels. And we are also going to be administering the ACT Aspire and the standard-based assessment as required by law.
Thank you. Ms. Valles, anything else?
Just on the, on the grants, Senator, believe me, from day one, that is exactly, that is exactly what we're looking for. I know we can Google a whole lot of these grants, but thank you again for giving us those directions because that is one of the focus of this group right of the new sets of trustees. As we improve our facilities, as we improve all the things that are needed by our students, this is where hopefully we can get additional funding for this call. And I thank you so much for reminding us again to pursue all these grants. Thank you.
And you can also raise funds. So you can establish a foundation and raise funds to supplement. And you know, the more that you can supplement the government of Guam, the more independence you actually will have, right? So...
As a matter of fact, I think our council chairwoman had actually alluded to that. And A, we could always raise, you could always be able to tap some grants. And unfortunately, our first few months of term in office is just really cleaning house, Senator. And now we are ready to really move into the more serious, the performance level of the students, additional monies for the grant. And this is what this, your new board of trustees are trying to do now. It is just all strictly all just making sure that our financial are auditable. All of these things have to be a major work for us. And now we want to make sure that all of these, because in any time you pursue your grants, you want to make sure that you are financially auditable. And those are the things that we're trying to do right now, Madam Senator.
Helen Nishihara?
Thank you, Vice Speaker Benjamin Cruz and Senator Underwood for allowing us to come today. We want to thank you mostly for your --
State your name for the record.
Oh, I'm Helen Nishihara, Board of Trustee Secretary for ILEARN Academy Charter School. Thank you. We want to thank you for your support and your guidance. We've continued to prosper in the charter school because of your support and we just want to thank you for this time. In regards to the cap, we wanted to, we wanted to make sure that the charter school is able to grow and you had expressed that you were, that was your intent, was to allow us to grow and prosper and to succeed. And the intent of the amendment was not by means stifling us or anything like that. But we got together, Guam, ILEARN, and the council to try and figure out how we can address the amendment. And as we spoke, in order for both to be able to succeed, we were considering that perhaps if we give the current legislation, the current law, if we allow it to take its course, and that's where we were, we came up with in yesterday's meeting.
Okay, so this is now the current law or the amendment?
The, because...
The current law here, as it, as it states, so you have a two, like Guam has a three-year extension plan. So we have just heard from Guam that they are okay with using the official enrollment of September 30 for this upcoming school year and, and to be able to manage that with a supplemental, supplemental resources, right?
Yes.
And so if, I'm now hearing two different versions.
Okay.
In fact, three, because we had a conversation.
Yes.
So now we're back to you're saying that you want, you're against amendment. That's what I'm hearing you say.
As, as the, what you presented, when we had met, you had stated that you were willing to work on, on it for the, for the language to be clearer, but as the bill that, the amendment that you had presented, that was the one we were a little bit concerned about.
Okay, so the concern that you had in our conversation, so everyone would be up to speed with it.
Sure, sure.
Was that for ILEARN Academy, ILEARN Academy was, was approved for up to 450 students.
450, that's correct.
Their enrollment right now is 340.
It was 349 a few weeks ago when we first --
Okay. It was 349, 350. And so if they, if they were to use their official enrollment as of September 30, I believe that's 330 students, right?
Yes.
So if they were to use that, then for their planning purposes, it doesn't really allow them to grow to their approved level of 450. I believe that was approved level for, for ILEARN Academy for the next three years.
For the next, for this, for this coming school year, yeah.
For this upcoming school year. So you actually had, had then discussed with me whether we can then work with the language that would allow you to go up to the 450 that was...
Yes, that's correct. For this school year, yeah.
Okay, for this school year and then from that point on, we can then base it on the official enrollment.
Allow us to continue to grow. Yeah, and that was, that was the big thing that we were concerned about because the fiscal year and the school year are two different.
Right.
And so because we're approved for 450, we know that August, we'll be able to reach the 450 or even come very close to it, but that's still within the fiscal year 16. So in order for us to not exceed that, we have to ask for what we would see, what we would look like in September 30 of fiscal year 16. So that's what we had requested for. So in order for us to request for 17, we'd like to see what we would look like by September 30 of 2016, as opposed to going the other way around.
Okay. All right. We'll have some more conversations.
I'm getting a book.
Vice Speaker, when Vice Speaker has his hands.
I'm still trying to figure out how I'm supposed to budget for that.
Well, you can't budget for it based on what is being described. And what it is, is that we're looking for that number. What I'm proposing with that amendment is that it's your official enrollment. In your case, it's your approved enrollment, which was 450, right?
That's correct.
And so that would be, we need to take a look at the, the language of the bill as it is right now, whether we would say October, you know, your official enrollment as of September 30 of the preceding year, not to exceed, not to exceed the approved enrollment level approved by the council, something to that effect. Yeah.
We said we understood, not, not that we agree, but we understood.
Right, okay. As long as we have that, we have that on the record that we're understanding.
I understand.
For, for budget purposes, we, we fall under GDOE's budget. So the 214 million that you had passed for fiscal year 16, that's where our funding comes from. But when, when we invoice, we invoice only what is currently enrolled for that month. So, and it's prorated and so that's what comes out of GDOE's funds. And so what you approved for GDOE, they have us in mind, knowing that no matter how many kids are going to come into the school at any given time, we're only going to give you X amount every month to accommodate those kids that are currently enrolled. So if that's helpful in, in planning the budget...
You know, that is helpful because then I know that even if I, even if I budgeted for 450, if you only had 330, you're not going to get 450.
That's correct.
You're going to get 330.
And that's, that's exactly what happened. When we first opened, we had anticipated that opening in the middle of school year, everybody, 358 kids were going to come. We only had 136. So although the legislature said, okay, you're allowed 356 coming out of GDOE's budget, GDOE only gave us for the 136. The rest stayed with GDOE.
Okay.
So, and I think that's, yeah, thanks.
But it doesn't work the, the other way around? I'm sorry.
It's all, it's all, it's all reimbursement and it's, I think that's where Helen is coming from.
If we had more than what was budgeted for, it doesn't work the same way.
Oh, that we would then...
Because he keeps asking, where am I going to put the budget?
I cannot budget for anything more than you have. I mean, if, if you said 700, then it would be 700.
Right.
If all of a sudden you have 850.
We have to take care of the 100.
Yeah, I, it wasn't anticipated and we cannot budget for that.
I understand, Senator. Strictly charter schools are pure reimbursement after the fact. So we get our reimbursement after we have spent all the money. So what Helen, what Helen is saying is even if, but like the charter school is 3.3 on what we are being budgeted for, 500 something students, right? So it's not necessarily exhausted as already appropriated by the legislature, but that could even not, it's not even a surplus. But the rest of the money that was appropriated might not really be used by our school, simply because certain expenses varies. So I think the point that we're driving at, even at 55 and even if we're pegged on certain budget, it doesn't necessarily, what I'm afraid, Senator, is we might even be short certain expenditures that we did not budget for. So we're really careful in budgeting on, on 5,500, on the amount of students that we will be able to take based on what was approved and carefully spend that money. Because if we have overspent beyond, and this is reason why I'm very, very careful with how GAC's money is being spent, is just to make sure that we don't go over. Otherwise, we'll be asking for additional appropriation.
I understand that the risk of breaking a, another SCAB open, how much are you paying for your facilities?
Uh, there's only one facility that we pay currently, Senator. It's the trade school because we have a minority.
I know, but the main campus, how much are you paying in rent?
Nothing.
Who's paying for that?
Well, it's underlist by the government, as I know.
Yes. And the person next to you, how much are you paying for your rent?
Our rent is under what is called an A-plus contract, which encompass not just the facility, but a lot of other services.
I understand.
We pay 118,000.
And that's not covered in the 500, the 5,500?
That's inside the 5,500.
Okay. But I'm just saying, you're having to pay rent, they're not paying rent, and they keep insisting that somehow we're shorting them. We're paying their rent.
No, no, Senator, that wasn't, wasn't the case. I was just barely, I was just saying that we are living within the means with or without rent. Everything, when we prepare our budget and we look at it diligently and, and if there is no money factor for the rent, therefore there is no money that would have to be expended for rent. The trade school, it was disclosed in our budget, so it's budgeted. We did the 5,500.
Yes, but when it first started, you were out trying to find your own building that you were going to rent yourselves and figure out within the 5,500, like they are, to pay for your rent plus your operation of the school. I'm just saying, it's just...
I know one thing that they're not paying for, that we are paying for, is textbooks. We had to purchase, because the additions that were being used were outdated already, we had to purchase $171,000 worth of books, direct instruction books to be updated with what was being printed and...
And do they get their iPads free?
No. What iPad? Oh, that was a grant. No, no. What I'm saying is...
You're saying they're not having to buy books and I'm just saying, please, you guys, don't, don't start that.
Okay.
Because...
We budgeted it for that.
Yes, so, we won't start that comparison.
Okay.
Right? And, but you do know that if, if DOE is using the same textbooks as you are using, that you can actually get that from DOE. That's part of the, the public law that allows you to have that, that DOE can order it for you.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you, Senator.
All right, so I think we also have Mrs. Palomo, if you're done, Ms. Nishihara.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, buenos dias. I'd like to first ask for dispensation. I just had some student issues to deal with. Graduate, graduate's grades are due today. Thank you very much for this opportunity. My name is Rosa Solis Palomo, and I'm the chair of the Guam Academy Charter School Council, Charter Schools Council. And also from the council is Mr. Francis Tovis Anki, and.
Dr. Suzanne, let me talk.
Dr. Suzanne McManus, I guess. I just want to stay back there. Okay. But again, thank you very much for this opportunity. As I was listening, I, there were some concerns or issues that have been brought up, and perhaps at the end of my testimony, I'd like to kind of address them. I may not have the solutions, but just to do further enlightenment, if that is the word. There are two sections of the law that I would like to cite, that I believe does speak, maybe indirectly, to Bill Number 219-33. And the first section is the purpose of Guam Academy Charter School Act, which is subsection one, or Section 12102. And if I may read, "The Guam Academy Charter School Act of 2009 is enacted to provide opportunities for teachers, parents, guardians, students, and community members to establish and maintain schools that operate independently from the Guam Public School System as a method two." And there are six items listed under this, I just, I want to just focus on E, which is "provide parents, guardians, and students with expanded choices," and that's my own boding, "in the types of educational opportunities that are available within the public school system." And then the other section is 12103D, on Under Definitions, which defines the council as, "Council means the authorizing chartering entity known as the Guam Academy Charter School Council, Schools Council. These two particular sections of the enabling legislation for charter schools are extremely important to my testimony this afternoon. The Guam Academy Charter School of 2009 is the only public law that affords parents, guardians, and students a choice in public education at the elementary and secondary level. Right now, if I were to send my child to another public school on the island, unless I was a teacher in that other school, or at that other school, I, as a parent, am mandated to register my child at my residence's designated district school. I do not have a choice as to which school he or she can attend. The Guam Academy Charter School Act of 2009 affords me that choice. Of all the intents of the Charter School Act of 2009, 12102E is probably the most beneficial and attractive feature for parents, guardians, and students. I bring this up because the council believes that Bill Number 219-33 would restrict the number of parents and guardians, and hence students, who can exercise that choice. If I may use the fishbowl analogy, just as the fish only has so, just as the fish only has so much space to swim in, so too will the parents and students. The fish has no room to expand its space. It is locked into that space from the moment it is placed into it. The same thing will happen to our parents and students. Once the number of spaces, in this case defined as students' per pupil cost, the spaces funded has been reached on September 30, there will be no further space for others to exercise their choice for an alternative educational program available in the public schools. We can say that the charter schools have a choice to enroll more students before the September 30 deadline, and that possibly could happen with the use of grants. However, that is not fair to the schools, because this type of choice imposes unsound educational practices, just for the sake of increasing the numbers for the following year. It is not fair to use funds earmarked for a set number of students on other unfunded students from August to September, just so that we can get the additional enrollment increase on September 30. The definition of the Guam Academy Charter Schools Council is just as important. It is the council that authorizes charter schools. It is a council that authorizes, gives charter schools the authority, per the GACs Act of 2009, as approved by the legislature, to establish and implement charter schools. The council does not take its role lightly. We spend weeks reviewing petitions or applications, make recommendations for revisions, and approve such petitions. Both of our charter schools, Guam and Island Academies, were approved with an enrollment growth plan for five years. As stated in the law, they can have charter schools up to five years. These are attached for your reference, and you've seen them, because I believe we've spoken to these. As you can see, last year Guam was to have grown another 40 students, and I do, Mr. Vice, Vice Speaker, I do understand the issue of facilities being funded in one school, or partially funded, and facilities not being funded in one school. I do believe, however, that in the future, Island will eventually be paying for their facilities as well, because they are building a facility. And I don't believe that it is cashed, right? It's all in cash. There's going to be a payment plan, I'm sure. Okay. As you can see, last year Guam was to have grown another 40 students. Rather, it was funded at the status quo. Thus, 40 parents and students were not able to exercise their choice for an alternative educational program. A number of students were turned away, and the waiting list gets longer and longer. The council is indeed grateful that Island Academy was not, was not affected. It was funded for its full 450 students as recommended by the council, and as indicative of its enrollment growth plan. However, in the next school year, school years 2016, 17, should the schools be funded at the same level based on the number of students enrolled as of September 30, 2015, both schools will be adversely affected. Guam will not be able, again, to expand its number of classes per grade, and Island will decrease in enrollment, meaning not getting to the 450 or as close to it as possible, and thus not be able to enroll more students into each of the grades. To implement Bill Number 219-33 will certainly erode the intent of the Guam Academy Charter Schools Act of 2009, as well as the authority vested on the council that the legislature has placed to establish and implement charter schools as approved. Perhaps consideration should be made to amend the law, so that any and all charter schools in the future, to, to assist in the projection of funds that are needed for charter schools, that it not include an enrollment growth plan, and just include all grade levels that it intends to serve at the time of application. However, this plan still restricts parental choice, as there are no assurances that a new school would meet its enrollment cap its very first year. Along the lines of recommendations for amendments to the current enabling legislation, the council is amenable, and would like to suggest the following changes, and wish to request your and your committee's support. To allow charter schools to serve either elementary, middle, or high school levels only, and not to have a school that has elementary, middle, and high school all in one. For the council, it becomes a little bit of a nightmare. Except to grandfather Guam Academy, because it is the one school, it is the first, and also the only school that does carry, that does serve K through 12. Also, to conduct an independent study of the current per pupil cost in the public schools, and that can be, that can outline whatever it is that, you know, is, that we all, even the schools, the council, the legislature wishes to have included. And three, to include at least one pre-K4 class in each charter school, as they are now piloting in the public schools. The council will gladly discuss these recommendations with you, if you so wish at a later time. I'd like to just speak to a couple of things that have been brought up, and I always do this, I lose what I need. I, I share your sentiments about fiscal year 2016, 17, regarding Guam's 640 to 890. I also heard them say that they were looking at 740. And inclusive of that is their intent to, to start a preschool. Perhaps that number should be decreased, because the law only stipulates a pilot, a piloting of the preschool program, and we, the charter schools, are not included under that law, unless it is specifically mentioned, and I may be reading the law erroneously, and forgive me, but if that plan, if, if the charter schools are not part of the pilot, are not part of the four schools that are authorized to implement, or as GDOE has implemented, then as a council, it is not prudent on our part to continue to, or to encourage the charter schools to include pre-K4 as part of their budget. Unless, you know, I, you can correct me, and I would gladly be corrected on that, if we can.
It would seem to me, my understanding of the charter school law was the hopes that, as you, as you see, choice was E. The more important ones are A, B, and C.
The instructional program.
Innovative, innovative.
I understand.
So you're, you're stressing E of choice was one of our last, one of the last things that we were considering. We were looking for new, innovative educational facilities, not facilities that we're going to be using, programs that the regular school system had decided it was going to discontinue. And how the council could have approved something like that is beyond me.
In speaking with respect, Mr. Vice Chair, Mr. Vice Speaker, with respect to the pre-K program, there are other innovative ways to implement pre-K program, and I know you know that.
I understand, and it would seem to me that the charter school policy, I mean, law, would be to have a charter school that just tried to figure out a good way of dealing with just that group. It didn't matter whether or not we're piloting it in the regular program, but that would be an innovative educational.
Okay.
Facility that would improve the student achievement going forward. Now, that's the kind of thing that I think charters, your council should have been looking at first, before anything else. A really innovative preschool system that, you know, it's not so much that it was a Montessori that you, we could afford, but, but something that had some kind of innovative pedagogy.
Okay, well, I'm glad that I did bring it up, though, because now that's clear in my mind, that even though we are not, the charter schools, we're not inclusive, we're not included in the four pilot schools, that if they can come up with an innovative strategy, instructional program for preschool, that that is.
Right.
That it is possible for inclusion.
And it's not only that it's innovative, but it is proven to be effective.
Research-based.
And so we do have a charter school that had already started over the past, how many years? Three years. And so you can understand, Madam Chair, that if we are concerned about an accelerated increase in the enrollment, and we do not have a report just yet, right now, before us, that is demonstrating that the, the charter schools are actually meeting the objectives of, of, of that mandate, then you can see where we are saying, hold back. We do need to ensure that the taxpayers' money is actually substantiated, right? That it's, it's, so, so, so I understand, we, we fully understand the intent and the objectives of the, the mandate, and establishing the charter schools. But where we are at right now is really that we can all admit that Guam Academy had a rough, had a rough startup, and you're, you're settling that right now, and so, from our end here, we're trying to not necessarily stifle the growth, but we're trying to manage, because these are just, there are still public school students that must be afforded educational programs that are not only innovative, but they are effective. So, Madam Chair, yes.
And I understand that very well, and I, I appreciate that you are all knowledgeable of the trials and tribulations that our first charter school had to encounter, and at the same time, the council itself trying to work through these problems, these issues. And both charter schools have been very, very cooperative with the council in trying to resolve any issues that they have come up with. Some are easier resolved than others, but together, working together has really helped, rather than, you know, being on opposite ends. And if, if I may continue, then, with the issue on, how then can the legislature, can your office, Mr. Vice Speaker, be able to work with the budgeting issues for the next two or three years? Island still has four after this year, three and a half years, except we can't cut off the school right in the middle of the school year, so it will be five, another three and a half years, yes. Guam has another two more years after this year. If, maybe a, a possible suggestion is that we go back and revisit the numbers that they have come up with in their growth plan, and I under, I know that now that Guam has decreased from the 640 to the 890 mark, down to 740, I think, and Island has moved, has decreased from the original 900 to 600 within the five years, yes. So if we could go back and revisit these numbers, and in the next, in the budget submission, we just include in there, if there's going to be any projected increase for the following year thereafter, or years thereafter, that it be included in that budget request, in the fiscal 2016, 17 budget request. We have discussed this over and over and over, and we do want to. We have discussed this over and over and over, and we do want to give some constructive suggestions, suggestions that are realistic. And I know that for many of us, we don't, you know, we are on the other side, and we don't necessarily think the same way that you do as senators and as the individuals who allocate funds to all these different agencies and different specific projects. But if there is, if we could assist, help out, discuss this further, if you can give us suggestions as to how we can best do this, I only have come up with one. It doesn't respond to what are you going to do in 2017 necessarily.
In a way that it might, if we could then get an understanding that there will be a max number in the 2017 budget, adding their 370 or 400 that you're supposed to have, and their number. But there has to be a number that you will come to us and say, between 690 and 800, 640 and 890, this is the number. And between the two, this is the number that we have to have. It's 1100 at 5500, and then I can budget for it. And then they just draw it down from it at DOE. But I cannot run a budget where I think it's going to be 740, that's what they told me today, but they somehow managed to get 890 students, and I'm supposed to try to figure out and tell DOE, you pay for the 890 from the budget that I only provided 754? I mean, that I carved out 744? You know, I mean, as it is, they're complaining that it's even in their budget. And so I'm just saying, just come to something, and you explain to us what the what the max is that you want, and we will deal with it, and just have an understanding that it is a, that that's the number that we're going to work with, and you're going to make both of them somehow figure out how to work with that. And to say that just because the statute only has a we're only looking at preschool as a, preliminarily, doesn't address the fact that you approved a charter school that doesn't have elementary separated from middle school from high school. So, you know, you obviously approved something that wasn't already in the law. And now to say, I can't do a preschool because it was, it's only, you know, a it's only going to you have, you have great latitude to do things with innovative. And please, look at A, B, and C before you come in and tell me that we should dwell on E. We purposely gave it E because that was the, we thought A, B, and C were more important.
I did not in any way meant that they were not important. It was just that these were the two issues that, there were two issues that I wanted to address. But thank you for that until, you know, that, it is still, it is possible that they can implement a pilot, a preschool program. I don't know what to do about this. But it's the innovation, it's something that's research-based, that's been tried and proven, that we need to address. And I know that any with the second, with ILEARN Academy, which is our second charter school, I know that as a member of that council and the other members that were there at that time, we were more diligent in looking at the application. And it's going to get, you know, I feel that the next application that comes about, again, is going to be looked at even more diligently because we are reading the law and we are, you know, trying to, to the best of our abilities, uphold what the law is trying to do.
Yes, and
And so we appreciate that.
At least in the law. Trying to figure out, I admit, I'm, as some of my three letter colleagues remind me, my, my, my my terminal degree is two letters, not three, and so I don't understand education.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So
I didn't get that.
It's in a completely different area. But I was at the Presidential Series up at the university, no, it was the Filipino Studies. And I discovered, there was this great discussion between this economist from the Philippines and a schoolteacher from here who was insisting that, you know, she was telling this economist to somehow go back to the Philippines and explain to them that they, they should start teaching English earlier in school. And I was surprised, and I've now read a couple of treatises on it, that the economist insisted that studies have been done that shows that children do better in school if they are taught in their first language until age eight, and then forced to learn to speak English and learn in the English language. That if they can get the concepts down in their first language, they would be better prepared. And so it would seem to me that a truly innovative school that wanted to deal with our Micronesian population, a truly choice school would be one that would have a preschool and an elementary school that allowed the Micronesian students to have teachers that taught them in their first language, and then
Move them into English.
Move from there at age eight. Now, that would be a charter school that I could see being supported. Yeah, but I mean, supposedly, that's the way studies are being, are showing, that students are more productive and more successful if they are taught in their mother tongue first. And once they have the concepts down, then we graduate, we gradually move them into being taught in the English language. But if they're in preschool and first grade, and they don't understand anything that's happening, it's really, really difficult. And once they've, once they've lost, lost out in first grade and second grade by third grade, they completely write it off, and they just don't, they've locked out.
Well, I've always been a follower of bilingual education in elementary schools, so I understand exactly what it is that you are, you know, saying here. But I just, if I may just go back to the maximum, are you then saying that once we have this discussion with the charter, the council has this discussion with the charter schools about their budget, that we can actually submit a request to be funded between the two schools for, let's just say that the magic number they come up with is 1,200 students, between the two, between the two schools? Yes, I understand, sir.
It's got to be a reasonable number, and it's got to be something that's realistic.
Right.
We already went through their first five years, and we know that we're nowhere near close to either one of their projections. So all I'm saying is, by April, come in and say, between the two of them, they think realistically, starting in August, they will have a combined population of 1,100. Can you budget for 1,100 at 5,500? And I can say that I can work with. But if you come in and you tell me the approved plan that I gave them says that they can get up to 890, and, you know, and they're only going to get to 700, but, or whatever it is, I can't be budgeting for 890 when they're only going to be at 700, and then when that money could be used for someplace else. If we can say definitely that this is the number that we're going to try to work for, and agree, and you come in and make the presentation that this is the number that we'd like for you to budget for, and DOE just pays them for whatever they actually have, at least I have a max number that I can work with. But I cannot work with a range that's 250.
That's right.
It makes me nuts.
And you know, the point here, Mrs. Chairman, of submitting this, introducing this bill, is really to manage the budget. Because last year, how many times has the charter school come back to the legislature? They came back in November, as I understand it, I believe November, and then they wanted to come back again in September because there was an increase. So what I was trying to do was try to get that number, an official number, that we can deal with in providing sense of order, so we know what it is. But the key here is, as you speak about flexibility, and not to hinder the fish in the bowl, but the key here is reality. The reality is that we have so much water under, in which that fish can thrive. That's our reality with other fish, correct? And so we do, we do want to be innovative, we want to have the flexibility, we want to be creative, and we, but most of all, we want to meet the needs of our students, and we want to show that we are meeting the needs of our students. Now, when this was initially written, the mandate was written, the assumption here in speaking with the author, speaker, Juan Pat, was that she assumed that the students were going to come from the public schools. And it's a public school. But it has opened up now, so that it actually, there are other students are coming in, and it's not, so that's why that 5,500 per pupil cost, I believe, was the magic, the magic number. It was going to be, it was, she assumed that it was going to be an exchange.
But it wasn't.
But it's open, and so I believe you have a percentage of students who are coming in, as you should expect for an innovative school, to come in not only from public schools, but also the private schools. And so there are challenges that will be coming up, because, yes, ILEARN, you still spend, you still, you pay for your facilities now. And I believe for Guahan Academy, you're, you will need to budget for your facilities?
Eventually, eventually, Senator.
This next week?
We have up to 2017, so we're working on really obtaining some
You have to start with
hopefully free money that we can get for our facilities. But Vice Speaker is very correct. We've seen that, and we're willing to really pursue that. We, all for the interest of our kids, a charter school. But Senator, a while back, I remember when Senator Amber was visiting, there was some, there was, you mentioned something, as hopefully one day, the charter, the charter school will be on its separate, will be given its separate budget, rather than get tied up with DOE. Hopefully that one day become a reality, becomes a reality, and really look forward to that. Vice Speaker, you go.
No.
Yes, yes, yes.
I have no objections to that. But the thing is, is that if it was a separate budget, I'm not going to give you a budget for 890, and you're only at 740 or 620. So I'm happy that it's within DOE, and that their auditor audits you, and only gives you the number that you actually have registered. Because if you were separate, that extra amount is not, there's no lapse that you're going to be able to run off and decide that you're, you know, whatever you're going to spend with it. I need to have to try to figure out how to live within the limited resources we have, and provide for everybody. And so I'm, you know, it's just trying to find a way to work with a number that I can finally say, all right, 1,100 times 5,500 is easy for me to figure out. But 1,100 times, well, 1,000 to 1,400, and just put, set that aside, and DOE screaming, you know, we asked for 280, 80, and you only gave us 215. That extra four could have gone to something else.
Madam Chairwoman, Francis Tovas, otherwise known as Anki. I want to at least address some of the issues as it deals with finances, since that's one of my appointment mandates, since I'm the finance representative on the council. Mr. Vice Speaker, I totally understand what you're faced with in terms of the budget and the difficulty. We will continue to at least state what the growth pattern will be for the different schools. And if it's April that you'd like a number from, of each of the schools that their projected budget for the number of students, if it's April, we'll give you a number in April, or before that. So that you have a number that's workable, and you can still see the growth pattern, so you can look at it going forward, for the next fiscal years that you have to deal with. That's important, at least for the planning for, on your side, as well as for the schools and the council. They have to know that, that a year from now, or six months from now, that that certain mandates will be required of them, and that the money that goes along with that will be there. If they, if they know that, Guahan knows that 740 is going to be appropriated for them, then that's a number that they can live with. Or if it's ILEARN, and that if it's 350, and they, the expansion is still to 450, and, but 350 is the budget that we're looking at, that's fine. And we're still telling you that 450 is the goal to get to. I think both numbers are important, because we're telling you for that upcoming budget year cycle that you have a number, and that for the next year after that, that's at least our target. You should have both.
I fully agree, and I want to know that. I want to know that they, eventually, they're going to get to 450, or they're eventually going to get to 1050. But the thing is, is for budgeting purposes, I need to realistically know that next year they're only going to get to 370, and they're going to get it to between 640 and 890. Give me a number between them, and then I can work with it.
And we'll do that. We will, we'll give you a realistic number, that we can still provide the innovation and the productivity that you require. The second thing that I wanted to at least address was the issue of, as you had mentioned, of building space, and rent, or lease, or purchase of property, in that right now, it is not a level playing field between the both of them and the other public schools. But, you know, given that they've just recently started, we have our growing pains, and we'll figure out how best to actually state that. But in the budget, if there was some portion for rent or capital costs that we can at least focus on and say, well, it's 100 some thousand, 120,000, whatever the whatever the number is for that rent, then we can at least tell you that that's going to be the issues, plus the 5,500 per student.
That's a whole other discussion, because I just, when, I didn't vote for this.
Okay.
And I'm just saying, you have to, if you want to have this new school, some of it has to be borne by them, by everybody that wants to make this choice. And we'll fund part of it, but the thing is, is that,
Not 100%.
How many schools am I going to build? What if you approve six? I can't even build, rebuild one school, and you're going to tell me you want me to budget for six new schools in, as charters? They'll hang me, when I'm not, when I can't even budget to try to refurbish one. So they have to assume some of the responsibility, whether it's grants or some other thing, to try to figure out how that's going to be, how that's going to be done. They were very lucky that we made the mistake of buying Tedsin, or leasing Tedsin, and there was space that they could have, because they didn't need the, all of it. But in the very beginning, I know that we delayed the, the opening was delayed months, because they couldn't find a building that they were going to pay for. Not so much that find a building that the government was going to pay for, but it was a building that they were going, they were going to pay for. And it's just, and I can't, I mean, with them, the fact that they're building a brand-new campus, that's their decision, and they have to figure out how they're going to be able to pay for it. I mean, the 110,000 that they're paying to use Ukadu Village, you know, maybe I should say, put into law, they have to stay there, because it's under 110,000, because next year, am I supposed to pick up their mortgage for, for the brand-new building?
I realize that 100% is not a, I guess, a reasonable or an expected expense that you were considering of rent or lease. But it is a reality, and that it makes it difficult to provide the program, the educational program, if we're taking that money, that 5,500 per student, and partially paying for lease or the purchase of a property. I think we can make it work somehow between 100% financing of the lease by the government, and the rest, I think we can find a shared in-between that we can come to.
I understand where is that, where is that balance point? I, you know, I was at a Christmas party the other day, and I looked out over a gant bay from where we were out here in the floor, and I thought, how beautiful that is. And I realized that she and I look out into the, you know, and we're supposed to be leadership. And so, do we, do we say you can rent in two months? Or rent where? What, you know, up to a dollar a square foot? Or can you get up to $15 a square foot? What, it's going to get really?
Yes, I do understand that part. And all I'm trying to get at is that initially, for starting up the school, and that first couple of years, they need a transition timeframe to deal with that. And that's what I'm referring to. It may not be 100%, but it needs to be something.
The incubation was provided. And so, with the incubation provided, that was, that's coming to an end. And at that point, over the past several years, right, then, the whole notion of getting additional funding as enabled in the law, either through funds or foundation, or establishing foundation, is right there. And all we are saying, again, Mr. Tovis, is this, is that there has to be an effort from the charter schools to do their part, to seek the funds that will help to subsidize all of this. Guam was provided, how many, it would be four years now, Madam Chair, correct? Four years, the incubation period. ILEARN, did you have an incubation period? No, you had to go right in there, because you're the second charter school, and you had to just live within the $5,500 per student, and you're paying for the facilities with that, correct? Yes, okay. So you can, I know, I know that you would want this. We also need to see the effort, and that's.
Absolutely, Madam Chair. And I agree that we do have to share some of that burden, and we'll work on that. And we'll be a little bit better at doing that as the coming year progresses. Thank you.
I just, again, the suggestion for a number, X, whatever that number is, between the two schools. I believe, Madam Chair, that you're able, that's something that can be incorporated into the bill.
Yes, we can, we can work with the bill. We can work, all we're trying to do, like I said, the intent of the bill is to provide some type of management of the budgetary preparation, right? So that we're dealing with a realistic number.
Yes.
And that you wouldn't have to keep coming back to the legislature over, you know, the school year to say, oh, we need more, because we have this, right? So once that, that number, that realistic number is identified, whether it's going to be the official enrollment, or whether whatever it is that you're going to come together with and to propose, then that would be what we would be using from our end. And the rest would be your responsibility, would be to execute, to implement that budget, and to meet the goals of the charter schools. That would then be your responsibility.
I think that is, I think that is doable, so we'll just get back together again with the charter schools. And I know that our budget is due to DOE, GDOE, in January. So we should get this all taken care of by then, so that we're prepared to come before you in April to justify why we want the certain number. But thank you on behalf of the council, and this really gave us an opportunity to have a dialogue about what to do in the future. Merry Christmas.
Okay, Merry Christmas. Thank you very much. Do we still have, oh, I'm sorry, let me see. Okay, Marilyn.
President of the PTO.
Okay, come on, come on up. Yeah, that's the question. And Marilyn, Senator.
Hi, my name's Thesaas Mandiola, PTO president for Guam Academy, and then later drafted to the Board of Trustees, which I'm actually thankful for. As far as being a parent, my son actually got in the raffle and was into the school. It just so happened during his first grade. So I've been with the school for three years, been pretty active for the first two, and then now, serving here. Just wanted to say, as far as, you know, thank you for paying our rent. I think you guys need a lot of appreciation. Thank you for helping get in the incubation and starting this up. I have seen improvements as far as with my son, and thank you for giving me that option to be able to have my child go there, and along with my new child that's coming along. As far as the consensus with the parents, like I said, I've been active with the PTO for a number of years until I became president, and consensus with the parents are, they are seeing, they are, they do like the school, they see the improvements, they see that we are proactive. And now, serving on the board, I do understand what you guys are talking about, as far as with the budgets and the amount of students and whatnot. We did want this, I wanted this as a parent, to join a charter school. And now, with being part of the board, I know there's a lot of work, understanding that portion of it now, too, as well. Being part of the board, there's a lot of hard work, and we are dedicated to doing it. We are cleaning house, like Madam Fay had talked about earlier. And, you know, we're trying to run the facility a bit more efficiently, and we're getting prepared for that move.
Thank you, Mr. Mandiola, and so, Senator Amanda Bousin.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, and Vice Speaker Cruz, thank you. First of all, I'd like to say thank you for the Board of Trustees, and mainly the board, the council. They're going through a learning experience, too, you know? The legislature found in its wisdom to create something new. I mean, it's innovative, some of you support it. And Vice Speaker has said from the beginning in the get-go that he never supported charter school. But I think that he's seeing faces of children, or testimonies from parents that says, even if the direct instruction was not innovative, or perceived to be defined as innovative, because it was in the DOE school system. If DOE decided it wasn't going to work with them, but it's working for us. It's working for us because our clientele, we can see it, and we're going to, I'm going to talk more about the performance standards and the tests that's being, that is going to be coming forward, to be given to you. But I just want to say that we're all learning. I think Guam Academy Charter School has been slapped, and has been beaten, and has gone through a lot of review, rightly so, because that's, we welcome it, because that's how we learn. And we, there's no template that says, this is the way you're supposed to do this, A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, I. We seem to initiate the template. And as we grow, even if we think it is the right template, we modify that template, because we learn from our visitor, Senator Amber, what works nationally. And this notion about maybe what works nationally may not work for Guam locally. I want to dispel that notion, because we need to learn, whether it comes from within, or it comes from without. So that's what we are, we're a learning institution, and we learn. I am not an educator, so I can't speak, but I've come a long way to learn a lot. Come a long way to learn about all the acronyms in education, and all of the keywords. But I just wanted to say, first of all, thank you, Vice Speaker. I know that we had come to you, our initial budget for 520, and then when we enrolled, we had 600. And you saw that there were 40, there were additional students at the high school, at JCC, and you allowed us that funding to allow us to keep our students there. So I want to say thank you for that. Let's go back to, and I'm glad you also called, for record purposes and for accuracy, I think we need to understand that when Guam Academy Charter School went out, I was, I was hired to do the IFB. That was my first job with Guam Academy Charter School, was hired to try to find out how to get facilities. So we went out with an IFB, and we were prepared to pay for that rent. So this whole thing about, you know, being indebted to the government, we were evicted. We were threatened to be evicted. All students, 513 students, faculty and staff, were given a letter from our landlord that we were going to be evicted, which shows that we were ready, we were going to pay for that rent. We had no control over the negotiations between the landlord then and the government of Guam. And we still have no control over what the government of Guam was doing. But we are very grateful that the government came and salvaged the school, whether we call it the grace, I mean, it's miraculous for us, or else we would have been out without a facility. So we constantly remind ourselves that we are grateful for that incubation period, but we cannot, no longer be, to assume that, that grace, because we know we have to go and get our own facilities. But we were prepared to pay for the rent. That was what that IFB was. We entered into, we were going to enter into contractual agreement until things change. So, and then we were also the recipient of an eviction notice, and that was very scary. So that's, that's where we're at. The enrollment, when Mr. Tovis said, when do we give you that number? April, May, before the budget? Well, let me tell you what the council does to the charter school. We are already submitting our budget in December. So in December 2014, we submitted 640 students. And we just got, we were told that we could, that there was a budget ceiling, and it was going to remain. And so, that's what the, we heeded to the advice of the legislature. But that 640 was approved by the council. So it wasn't that we were not in compliance, but we are in compliance, definitely. Our budget goes, we are, yesterday, we had a joint hearing, joint session, working session with ILEARN. We talked about the bill, we talked about our budget. So we've been talking about the budget. And if, you know, if April and May is a date that you want, you should have, you should have already have learned what our budget proposal is in January, because the council receives our budget in December. And unless you say, give it to me earlier, but I believe, you know, December, January is plenty time for you to know exactly what that, the budget is, and what the enrollment, the projection is. Grants, we have, before the school started, the prior CEO went in and got a U.S. Department of Education, CSB Charter School Implementation Grant. That grant was a half a million dollars, more than half a million dollars. It got stifled. I went in and worked on it for six months, and I am in communication with Mr. Brian Martin of the US DOE, CSB, and we may be getting close to $150,000. But it's going to be between the, it's going to be in the grant period ending September 30th, 2013. So with that effort, we just didn't say, okay, go ahead. He knew what was happening, and he saw what I had to do. It was transparent, the board didn't have enough records then. But we went ahead and submitted all of that to the federal program people at US DOE. We wrote form to school grant, and we were denied. And the reason why I speak on this is because I'm in the development, grants and development. The form to school, we were told that we were not eligible, because we were not in the child nutrition program. And we've been trying to be in the child nutrition program, and this is our third school year. The consolidated grant, we have 75 tablets with all of its attendant of, I mean, accessories. And then we also have the, we have the online reading resource that goes with the tablets. So that is from the consolidated grant, and that's for this last school year. We're going to be getting 100 and some more tablets through the consolidated grant for the next school year. And so, so we are pursuing that. I mean, I came in late with that one. We also have, we applied for the U.S. Department of Interior Grant, and that grant was primarily going to use some of the compact aid monies from the Department of Interior, because in our ethnicity survey, the second largest group of students in the Guam Academy Charter School are Chukis, and then Palauans, and then other Micronesians. So we were asking, and I don't know what happened, because I remember that it was also through, both a joint effort between Dr. Dregons and myself, and then I never got any response back. So we may want to revisit that. So we may want to revisit that again. The other grant is the Youth Bill Grant. That is the U.S. Department of Labor Grant. And 80% of the Youth Bill Grant is really Department of Education. It requires that there is a matching grant of 250,000. It's 1.1 million every year for three consecutive years. So the Youth Bill Grant addresses children between 16 to 24 and that they're at risk. They, let's see, what is the status for that? Oh, it requires that we have a facility for some residential in case that some of the at-risk are like ex-offenders who needed their high school diploma. So we, the former Dr. Flores and I were working on that. And then, you know, we said that we were going to work on it again. But I think that we can open, we can revisit this particular grant again if we're allowed to increase our enrollment and if we have the $250,000 matching grant. We didn't have the 250,000. That was one of the reasons why for that Youth Bill Grant. But it's actually a Department of Labor Grant. There are other grants particularly, and I've actually done a lot of work on the new ESAA Act, the eight title programs there. And here I'd like to concentrate on pre-K. When we approached, when Guam Academy Charter School approached Council Chairwoman, Mrs. Palomo, about implementing the pre-K, knowing that even if we were not included, but they have just put in billions of dollars in the funding for SA for preschool program. It's an innovative program. We want to study more and find out what that is. So we really want to do that. Now, Vice Speaker, if I had a hat on, I would tip my hat to you because you read my mind about having to use native language on our pre-K. And we feel that if we can start on the pre-K and go after that SA funding, that we can do it without having to burden the local funding source. So that's something, Madam Chair, that I really would like for you to support us in that. The, let's see, what else I have? Oh. The enrollment. When we looked at our enrollment, one of the reasons why we had something like 740 to 890 was because we looked at the budget law and it was a ceiling. So we figure out, what does this mean? And then we really didn't know where our facilities was going to be. So you're absolutely right, Vice Speaker, about saying, how am I going to budget for something in between 740 and 890? So, but I wanted to give you an understanding of why we put that there. That was, yes, right. Well, no, the coming, the third-year student enrollment was 740 to 890, which is for fiscal year 2017. And so one of the reason, huh? Oh, 640, yeah, 640, I'm sorry. 640, 890, right? The only reason why we changed it to 640 was because you didn't budget for 640 the last time and we thought, we'll just see if they would go ahead and agree to 640. But really, our budget for, that's coming to the council, is at 740. And we just want to let you know right now that that's what our student enrollment, our projected student enrollment for fiscal year 2017, sir. We are pursuing facilities financing with USDA. And we've met with Joe Daigle. We've got all the paperwork going on that. And so that's where we are with facilities. Just, I was just taking notes so that I can respond to some.
I just want to make it very clear.
Yes.
Was the eviction notice from the legislature?
No, the eviction letter was from Cortec.
But it had nothing to do with the legislature?
No, it didn't, no.
I just want the listening audience to understand that the eviction notice had nothing to do with ours.
Oh, of course not.
Okay?
Yeah.
And the problems that you've had with your management and stuff was not caused by the legislature. That was your own self-flagellation, not ours.
That's correct.
Please get that clear. And I want the public to understand that.
I did say that the eviction notice came from a landlord, yeah.
But in the way that you stated it, it seemed like we were the ones that were beating up GACS. We were not beating up GACS.
No.
You beat yourself up with the selection of people that you had on your board, not us. So please make it clear to the listening audience that it was not the legislature that selected your board that you had problems with or your CEO.
That's very clear. And the new board did away with the CEO and that was one of the reasons why. But I'm sorry if you misinterpreted to me, but I wanted to let you know that we were prepared to have a landlord-tenant relationship with the landlord then. And so that eviction was, and I wasn't trying to imply it was the Guam legislature. And I want to make it very clear that it's not the Guam legislature that issued the eviction notice. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Mina Buzin. And I don't think we have any more. But I do want to go on the record that we did get input, a written testimony from Department of Administration and also the Department of Education, the superintendent. Yes, that's made available there. Thank you. Okay. I want to thank all of you again, Sajid Smazi, for your presence and public testimony this afternoon. The public hearing is now adjourned and the time is 4:58, 3:58 PM.